Are you ready, Rob? Good evening, everyone. It's about five minutes after six. Sorry, we're just a couple of minutes late. This is the regular meeting of the Crescent City Council for Monday, December 17th. And Mr. Black, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no final actions are taken in closed session.
Okay. Then we'll open our session now. And Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Here.
Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Mayor Protam Holly?
Here.
And Mayor Ania.
And I am here. Councilwoman Shalong is going to lead us in the pledge, and then if you would please stand for a moment...
Please stand.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing for a moment, for a moment of silence for the community of Newtown, Connecticut. Thank you very much. Our first order of business tonight is our consent calendar, items one through four. Are there any questions from the council? One through four. Any public comment on our consent calendar, items one through four? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Please take the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania.
Yes. Our next item is reports and presentations, and we have none at this time. Next is communications. This is the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Noted, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to our staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not here at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of our record. After receiving recognition, please state your name and the city or county residence for the record. And comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, and we'll adjourn from the city council and go to the housing authority, item number five. And I'll call the Crescent City Housing Authority to order. Would you please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Boardmember Gastineau?
Here.
Boardmember Shalong?
Here.
Boardmember Murray?
Here.
Vice Chair Holly?
Here.
And Chairman Ania?
Here. The first item on the housing authority is public comment, and it's just what I said a minute ago. Anybody can make a comment on the housing authority if you'd like. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? The consent calendars, council have any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Move to approve. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Boardmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Boardmember Shalong?
Yes.
Boardmember Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes. And I see our director is here. Evening, Megan. Did you have any comments? No comments? We have no public hearings in housing. Continuing business, we have none, new business, none. So we will adjourn our next regular meeting in the housing authority until January 21st at 6:00. Thank you for attending. Okay, we will now adjourn from the housing authority and go back to reconvening, well, actually reconvening before we go back to the council, is to go to the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. That's item number six. Could you please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Boardmember Gastineau?
Here.
Boardmember Murray?
Here.
Boardmember Shalong?
Here.
Vice Chair Holly?
Here.
And Chairman Ania?
I'm here. This is also a public comment time for the Crescent City Successor Agency to the redevelopment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? We'll go to the consent calendar. There's two items on the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. There's some warrants, so would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Boardmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Boardmember Shalong?
Yes.
Boardmember Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes. We have no executives' report, directors' report, no business items, no public hearing. Item number three, business. Under new business, consider and approve a resolution, Resolution 212-35, a resolution of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Redevelopment Agency of the City of Crescent City, approving their report on due diligence review for the non-housing funds and accounts and to determine the amount of cash and cash equivalents that are available for dispersment to the taxing entities.
Yes.
Yes, Jean?
Mayor, I'd like to have Mr. McDonald present this item. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, for the audience, is our finance director for the city. Mr. McDonald? Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. We wanted to bring everybody's attention. We inadvertently had forgot to include the due diligence review. It's a 13-page document that the auditor did. Basically, it's a special review of the procedures for the new legislation that was passed. The key component, it is the last section that shows there's no money for distribution. That was presented to the Oversight Board on Wednesday for public comment. That was due to be presented by December 15th. And the final action approving it by the Oversight Board has to be by January 15th. So by your action tonight, you'll see it. Any public comment that's input, we can take action at the, I think January 9th is the final meeting for the Oversight Board.
Council have any comments? I attended that meeting in Councilwoman Murray's place, and Mr. Reynolds was there and talked to us about this, this document. There's no board comment. Any public comment on the, this procedure? This document for due diligence?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, thank you. Okay. I see none, so...
Move to approve Resolution 2012-35 for the City of Crescent City's Successor Agency to the Dissolved RDA, the report on due diligence review for the non-housing funds and accounts to determine the cap, excuse me, the amount of cash and cash equivalents that are available for dispersment to the taxing entities.
Thank you.
Glad you said that. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Boardmember Murray?
Yes.
Boardmember Shalong?
Yes.
Boardmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo, after all of the finances are taken care of for the successor agency, does the number of times we have to meet start to decrease?
As a successor, or as a successor agency, I would say most likely that would be the case, probably at least quarterly. The, and we're all, this whole process is new to everybody. There's going to be several actions, you know, through probably the summer that the Oversight Board's going to be required to review and take a look at. I want to bring that to the successor agency first, or at least you keep the successor agency informed.
Sure.
Probably for the next 20-plus years, we're going to have to do our ROPs.
The ROPs?
ROPs and all that. So I would see the number of meetings probably diminish a bit, at least quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will adjourn then from the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. And two of the next scheduled meeting is January 21st. And we'll go back to our regular city council meeting now. We're at public hearings, item number seven, and we have one public hearing. Conduct a public hearing, consider and approve a resolution, and that resolution's item 212-34, approving and adopting an updated Community Development Block Grant Program Income Reuse Plan.
Yeah, Mayor, Bob needs to add something in here.
While Charlene is coming to the podium, I would point out that the adjournment date for both the housing authority and the successor agency should be January 22nd, which happens to be a Tuesday, but the 21st is a holiday.
Thank you very much. So those two dates are January 22nd.
And I'd like to have Charlene do the side of the chair.
Good evening, and congratulations on those of you who just got through the election, and welcome, Ron. Good to see you. I think everybody knows, but mostly for Ron's sake, I do the Community Development Block Grant Management for the city. We get these funds competitively. Used to be every year, now it's on a two-year cycle, pretty much. What is before you tonight, because these are federal funds passed through the state, there are a lot of strings attached to them, a lot of public participation, and a lot of agreements that have to be in place for how these funds are used. So what's in front of you tonight is a, an updated plan for the use of what's called program income. And we've had a lot of discussion in past meetings about program income and how it can be used. And the main thing that has to be in place before we can use program income is a plan which takes the place of a contract with the state. It's in effect our contract with the state for those funds. Program income is usually generated when a loan program is in place, and the money that's coming back as a loan repayment is then program income. And it is, they've tried to open it up a little bit. It used to be that it was not quite as flexible, that you usually had to use it only for re-loning money or some very limited purposes. They are trying to open that up a little bit. We did the waiver process for several projects the last couple of years that are now winding down. So we will be having another report on a couple of those projects in January when we close those out. But the state has required that any jurisdiction that has a program income reuse plan that's more than three years old, they have to update it with some new language and some new additions. They've been being monitored by HUD. HUD is being monitored by the powers that be at the federal level, so there's a lot of changes, a lot of tightening up, a lot of things that needed to be kind of resolved. So they've required, and our program income reuse plan was last adopted in 2006. So they required it to be done before January, and this is simply what needs to be in place in order for us to be able to continue to use the program income. There was a copy of the program income reuse plan in your packet. The only change that I would recommend, and I did get the approval to do this with our rep, is on page five of the plan, item D, as in dog. It's, at this time, it's worded, "All PI-funded activities shall be provided to project activities located within the boundaries of the City of Crescent City." And traditionally, we have used CDBG funds cross-boundary. And I said, "We really don't want to be tied to that in case there's something that we want to do within the urban services area. Water and sewer lines cross the boundaries if you want to do those kind of projects." So we just didn't want it tied down. The regulations allow for the use of funds in any area where the city determines it has a community development interest. So that's the only thing that I'm recommending be added there, is within the boundaries of the City of Crescent City or any area where the city determines it has a community development interest. So I'd be open to any questions about the rest of it. Yeah, I'll change it, and I'll give it to Jean.
I was just going to say, can you just change it to Delmar County? Would that encompass everything?
The reason I picked that language is because that's what the federal regulation says. And so I wanted it to make sure that, but if you made the determination that anywhere in Delmar County you had a community development interest, then...
What about the urban area of Crescent City?
That could be, we could put that in there, too. Yeah, it's, I'm not, is that defined by LAFCO?
Urban area.
Is the urban area defined? So we could, that's a boundary that we could use also if you wanted to do that.
So this is just a process that we're starting tonight, but then we will, you will come back to us with the actual projects that we will use the money to fund the projects with?
Yes. Right now, this is just the, this is the plan that has to be in place before we can do anything with the program income. If we don't have this plan in place, the state's going to come and say, "Okay, give it back." And we don't want to do that.
And I had a question. I was talking to Jean about this today. What was the program where we discussed it a while back where you could only use the reuse or the program income funds to fund projects that were already approved by the state?
That is, if you want to fold it into a, an open grant, then you can...
It still had to be open?
It had to be open.
Okay. I remember when we had program income funds a few years ago, and we could only give them to like, you know, it was like CASA and Harrington House and...
And those at the time were open grants.
Because they were open grants.
They were open grants. So there's still that option. So there's still the option of maintaining the revolving loan fund. You can still have a revolving housing rehab loan fund if you want. There's still the option of moving money into an open grant. That does require HCD's approval, but you can append it to an open grant, or you can do the waiver process for something that's not in an open grant, and that's what wasn't in place before.
Right, okay.
So...
Any other questions from the council?
Our last program income plan was six years ago. Do we have a, is there a timeline where we need to update it on a regular basis, or...
They like things updated every three years, is kind of the general rule for almost any agreement to do with CDBG.
Thanks.
Just, just an acknowledgement that it appears to me that what we're doing here is saying how we're going to manage the money and how it's going to be deposited, and an acknowledgement of how it's to be used, but we don't have any specifics about that yet.
That's right. That's right. And the specifics will come back later when we have more solid plans in place.
Yeah, we'll come back to the council probably in January, February with some specific ideas and projects. Thank you.
I really just wanted to say that I really appreciated this last round and how we were able to fund like 10 different programs that were kind of outside-the-box projects and not the typical nonprofit projects that we usually provide the funding to, so...
In fact, you know, I'd like to read this into the record for our audience at home. This is the funding that we approved, and it's almost complete now. So I'd like to read that. The Can Food Bank Services was $15,000. The American Red Cross Disaster Preparedness was $12,000. The RHS Supported Parenting was $10,000. The Children's Health Initiative was $17,800. The Senior Nutrition Program was $14,000. The Elk Valley Artisans Youth Involvement in Art was $10,000, and thank you for that, Harley. Those are those murals that are on Third Street. The Uncharted Shores Academy After-School Program was $8,800. The Fred Indert Municipal Swimming Pool was $35,000. And the Court Appointed Special Advocates was $15,000, that's CASA, for a total of $137,600 that we allocated to those organizations. So thank you for your hard work on that. And I, like Councilmember Shalong, we're very proud that we did that.
Yeah. It was, it was a hefty undertaking, and unfortunately, the state has told us that we can't do that kind of thing anymore. They're limiting us now to two open projects at a time, so...
Previous...
But we got it, we got it in under the word.
Previous mayor, Charles Slerdt, and I sat in a room with Charlene going over, we had a whole huge list of possible projects, and we were able to narrow it down to these, and I was really proud of that list.
That's a great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2012-34, a resolution approving and adopting an updated Community Development Block Grant Program Income Reuse Plan.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania?
Yes, thank you. Next is continuing business, and we have none, new business, we have none. Acknowledgements. That's number eight on our item, and that's acknowledging the retirement of our Public Works Director, Jim Barnes, and...
I don't approve.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Can I get a second?
Mr. Palazzo?
There seems to be a really important lady in the audience that agrees with me, Mr. Barnes.
Okay, I'm going to step down off the...
I think we should have Mr. Barnes come up front. How many council meetings have you attended?
I was telling Jean I probably attended over 200 council meetings. I can't believe it's the last one as Public Works Director.
It might not be, you never know. Never say never.
That's what I told him earlier this evening.
We are not happy about this. However, we wish you luck in the future. You're not going to be far away. You're not leaving town.
No.
You'll be nearby, and you're free to come here twice a month on Monday evenings. On behalf of the council, we want to congratulate you. We have this plaque for you that you might want to show to the audience.
Congratulations.
Thank you again, Jim. You know, just so the audience knows, Jim came from his private business, and coming as Public Works Director did many projects where he made phone calls to get bidders to come up here. Otherwise, we'd have very few bids. I don't know how much money he has saved the City of Crescent City by getting us competitive bids from out of the area. And that's something that a lot of people don't know, but I follow that all the way. And that's because of his personal, private contacts that they came up here. Us as a council here, we sat through, it's been about six or eight months ago, Kelly, with the Front Street Design. We had like four or five bidders that were from out of the area. And we thank you for that, for the residents of the city. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. Jim, you can't, you can't sit down, Jim. We're going to have you stand. You maybe want to say...
Can we do a roast?
A few words. I've been with the city about a year and a half now, and it's really a pleasure working with Jim and the engineering team, you know, he and Eric. I was really amazed at what you've done in the past eight, nine years in this community. And we're going to talk about some of that tonight, but I was just, you know, some of the projects that I saw when I first got here are very impressive for our small community and for us, you know, doing a lot of this in-house. Our, Jim and I's paths actually have crossed years and years ago that, yeah, I can't remember the story. And this is one of the things that I, he was impressed with. When I was a planner in the City of Folsom in the early 90s, 90 to 93, I was doing a lot of development projects. And I don't know if we've actually sat in a meeting together, but when I found that Jim worked for the Spink Corporation, was the principal, and that we know a lot of mutual friends and people in the City of Folsom, some still there, some I think have retired and moved on, that just, you know, put Jim several notches up for me because, you know, the work that you did with the Spink Corporation, I'm very familiar with, and it was all good work, and he's carried that to this community.
Well, thank you, Jim.
But before I leave, I want to see the look, the look that I know, Jim. You have to do it for me one last time.
I don't know what that look is.
Come on, come on, come on. It's this look here, Jim. It's this look here, come on. The look I've come to know. And one of the funniest things that, in this council meeting, I don't know what day it was, Jim is here and he's reading his magazines. He brings the magazines, California, and reads. And I look over, and I look at the page, and there's this picture of a guy doing this. It was Jim.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
And now we have a presentation from Mayor Aguirre.
Are we going to do comments after the presentation?
Yeah, we can do it after. I think we're going to need to. Hopefully, he'll stay till the end of the show.
Good evening, Mayor members of the council. I'd like to personally thank you guys for allowing us to give this presentation tonight as it means a lot to me, you know, personally. Jim and I walked into the Public Works Department together. As a matter of fact, Jim started on Monday, December 2nd, 2003, and I started on the Tuesday. So, so we've been in this together for nine years now. So, yep, so Jim Barnes, Crescent City's Public Works Director, 2003 to 2012. Definitely a bittersweet moment tonight. But it didn't start in 2003 for Jim. As a matter of fact, it started in 1948 in Lebanon, Oregon. And believe it or not, this cute little kid was Jim. In fact, so cute that we have a celebrity amongst us. And I wish I'd have known some of these facts nine years ago, as I would have used them several times, but Jim, with this picture, was actually voted the cutest baby in Lebanon. And he won a train set back then for us. So in 1950, his family moved here to Crescent City. So when Jim was just two years old, they started the tire shop. That tire shop is still a locally-owned business and thriving business today. These are the many faces of Jim during his school days. If you look at these, what's always kind of interesting with child pictures is that you can still recognize some of the same smirks and whatnot that we see today. So I particularly got a kick out of that top one there where he's kind of giving the half look where he's not quite sure if he believes you or not. Graduated Delmar High School. He was a warrior through and through, 1966. Went on, attended College of the Redwoods, and went on to Chico State University where he met his wife, Jan, who's in the audience today. They got married. You see, Jim was a bit of an athlete back then. He then went to the City of Fort Bragg, was the assistant engineer, and then became the public works director there as well. That shot of him there in the early 70s. He then went on to Sacramento, California, where he worked for the Spink Corporation and was a design engineer, and then became partner for 16 years. One of the big projects he did back then for the private sector was the Douglas Saiede Project, which is a major project, still one of the, one of the biggest projects that Sacramento has done, and a very complicated project that is still, I believe, one of Jim's most favorite projects. Then he came to Crescent City in 2003, and it was no longer about the, about the big, you know, projects in the private sector, it was about the public sector. And it was, it wasn't just about projects anymore, it was about the everyday life of Public Works. It was about your parks, it was about your streets, it's about your water, your sewer. And in particular, in 2003, the state of the city was a little bit different than it is now. The city was moving forward in the right direction. They had just completed the water main improvement project, which was the 24-inch transmission main into town. We added the Washington tank. The wastewater treatment plant had just completed its planning phase. However, the city was still under a cease and desist order. There was this big project that was looming out there, and we had no idea how we were going to accomplish it. There was the pool project where they actually had a committee that was formed. It was the Save Our Pool, which is now the POP, the Promodar Pool Foundation, because we had a failing pool, and that was infrastructure that needed to be completed. The streets needed upgrading. The front street project was hanging out there, and the tsunami landing was still standing. So the, one of the first things that I'll remember when Jim and I came in is we looked at the city's maps, and they were all old paper maps that had handwritten comments on them over the years, and they had worked well for the last 100 years, it seemed. But it was time to update them, so I can still hear Jim saying, "We need maps. I can't believe we don't have maps. What's wrong with this city? How can we not have maps?"
Oh, my gosh, you sound just like him.
Unfortunately, I've been around him for a while. We've had many of these conversations. But now we have maps, and on those maps, we have, with the help of Fritz Ludeman and But now we have maps. And on those maps, we have, with the help of Fritz Ludeman and the very dedicated staff, we have maps that have our infrastructure on them, and the water lines, and the sewer lines, and the hydrants, and you name it. It's a very valuable tool. And it was also a tool that we actually used during the last tsunami, as we pulled those same maps that we had with the contour lines, and we were able to plan for that event. So, it became a very useful tool. So, kind of going through the parks, you know, there's the regular maintenance stuff. And I've organized this just to take you through all of the projects that we've done. So, there's the everyday stuff, and then there's all the projects. And I'll try to run through this fairly quickly. As I was going through things, it dawned on me that, you know, we've accomplished quite a lot as a department, and Jim has a lot to be proud of. So, in 2004, the restrooms were not in very good shape either. So, there's a shot of the public restrooms. There's a shot, and you can't see, this guy right here is actually Jim. He's the only one that's that close underneath the 100,000-pound concrete building. But he has his hard hat on, so he's okay. And you can see the restrooms today, and they're tiled, and they're very nice. The pool project, like I had mentioned before. This was a project that was out there that we had put out to bid twice and couldn't figure out a way. And with Jim and this department and the council at that time, we're able to accomplish it. So, there's some of the four pictures of the pool that we'll run through. And there's a plaque of the council that actually helped make that project possible. So, again, we had the contractor that came in. They completed their portion of the project. As we moved through the project, and again, I'll go through these pictures pretty fast. This was a community project that really meant a lot to the community. We worked on the slide. We took a lot of this project on in-house, and we're able to complete a lot of the renovations there. We worked with community artists. Harley Munger is the artist that completed this with the help of local high school students. New locker rooms, you know, you name it. The whole, the remodel of the pool was a big accomplishment. Greta Lamore was an interesting character, and the community is very lucky to have her. She's very talented. The mural. But this was truly a project that was a community project. It's a treasure for this community that we'll have for a long time. And it's a project that I'm sure is near and dear to Jim as well. So, there's a shot of Jim, and actually, Jim took the high seat there, and that was actually at the pool dedication. So, if anybody were to fall in, everybody was gonna look towards Jim, that's for sure. The beachfront park improvements, you know, we did all those sidewalks and whatnot as we were here, and we were able to complete pedestrian improvements. We removed the trees along Front Street, reduced those trip hazards, completed Howdride Park, redid the streetlights, created a new standard. The tsunami landing, that was another project. It was a very controversial project. And so, this council and the Public Works Department went forward and completed this project. And today, we have an area that is very attractive, and will just develop as we move on into the future. All of the transportation projects that we've completed. So, we'll just run through them real quick. We did the Pacific Overlay from A Street to H Street. We did Harding Street rehabilitation. We've done the Fifth Street rehabilitation between J and K. We did Northcrest to Wilson. We did Ninth Street. We did the Harbor Trail, where we actually put in the bridge. We did micro-surfacing project all through town. Were able to complete the Fifth Street between A Street and Wendell. We did H Street from Front to 11th Street, all the access ramps all the way through there. You see, there's a shot of Jim. Just when we thought we were in trouble, here came Jim. And boy, he was Johnny on the spot on that one. Front Street, which is another project that's been out there for a long time for this community. It's a very historic project, and I think in the end, we ended up coming up with a design that the whole community can be proud of, where we incorporated the history as well as we have incorporated a lot of the features that we want for the future and the growth of this community. So, in total, here's the transportation projects that we've been able to complete. So, over $3 million worth of transportation projects, which, very little of which came from the city's general fund. Most of these were grant funded. Here's a map of the city. Everything in white is the city limits. Everything you see that has a color on it, our projects that we have done, we're planning to complete in the near future. So, over 60% of the city. On the water side of things. So, we've completed multiple water main connections. You know, a lot of the main water projects were done shortly before we got here with the incorporation of the 24-inch main into town. So, now it's just a matter of tying in some of the loose ends and making sure that we have a good, strong, gridded system. So, this is Madison Street. This one is the Citizens Dock Road, where we tied the harbor into McGruder, and we created a loop there, so we don't have a dead end on that route. This is the water main replacement project, all throughout the Filkins Track, where we had a bunch of 1-inch galvanized mains and 2-inch galvanized mains that would spring water leaks very often. That came through. This was a half-million-dollar job. The Yonkers Creek Bridge Project, where the county put in a fish-friendly bridge. This happened to be through a portion where both of our transmission mains ran through, so we had to replace the 24 and the 12-inch. A very, very logistically complicated project. This is the Jordan Creek Bridge Project. And there's another look that I've seen quite a few times. We just happened to capture it on camera this time.
You look like you're getting ready for vacation.
Yeah, there was a few comments on the job site on that one, too, with his Hawaiian shirt. And then there's another famous picture. But one of the biggest projects was the wastewater treatment plant and some of the sewer projects that we've done. And again, this was a different time. The city was under a cease and desist. We could not hook anybody up. Home Depot could not have came in. The Super Walmart couldn't have came in, you know. It was a time that the city was stagnant, and we had to get this project done. And that was the face of the project, along with the council making some pretty tough decisions. Talks a little about the cease and desist order, cease and desist order. Another project that kind of goes just, it gets incorporated with the treatment plant, but it's really, it's a huge project for this community and this city, is the outfall. You know, we installed a 24-inch outfall in which they directionally drilled from the park underneath the breakwater all the way out to a slot near the lighthouse where they tied it in, this 24-inch pipe. That's gonna give us capacity in our ocean outfall for the next 50 years. That's a major accomplishment, and it just kind of gets wrapped up sometimes in the treatment plant. It was quite a project, too. Stover Engineering also worked on that as well as Brown and Caldwell. It turned out to be a tremendously successful project. So, there's the connection into the lighthouse. It was quite the project. The treatment plant project itself, $37 million job, came in under budget. You know, this is, again, it's going to be a project, even though the treatment plant project will be a living project, and there'll always be projects there. This one has set us up for the future where we're in, we've completed the basics, we've completed the fundamentals. We have a plant we can build off of now. So, there's some shots of the MBR and just all the conduits and the rebar and whatnot that it takes to make a system like that work. There's some just different shots around the plant. There's some of the membranes that actually, that treat the sewage as it gets sucked through and through the filtrates. See, this is the quality of the water that comes out. It's .4 into U. That's .4 turbidity, and it's the drinking water that we have is .2. So, this is very clear, very clean water. It's amazing, the quality of our effluent nowadays. There's the new control room. And this will be a control room that will only be used for the treatment plant. It'll also be used for the water system and the sewer system eventually, where we can monitor all of our systems from this point. Again, these are foundations that we'll be able to build off of for a long time to come. Again, this is talking about the effluent now. We're a 30/30 plant, and we had BOD effluent that was always just right on the borderline of it before, and we were constantly just right on that border where we were teetering. And now, you know, we're down to where we're well below, and we have good quality effluent that we have some room underneath our permit. The projects we've completed recently, again, you know, it's about that courage to be able to do these projects, take these projects on, you know, and it's, because it's not easy, and there's risk involved.
I don't think they have these kind of projects at the county.
Not like this. There's the MBR projects. And it's, you know, it's about risk-taking. And, you know, I figured this would be a good shot to take it. And it's, and it's not only Jim, but it's also the city council, too. And the city council, you know, decided to do these projects, had faith in the department, had faith in Jim and the city manager and the team that we had working with us, whether it be Stover Engineering or the city crews or the contractor. And we accomplished a lot. It's, and for Jim, personally, you know, he's taken a lot of shots over the years, you know, being up here on the podium. And I've had a lot of time to sit down and talk to them about it. And the perspective that he had was amazing, you know. He just, he said, you know, he shrugged it off, and it is what it is. And, you know, it wasn't about that. It was about getting it done, because what it meant to this community and what it'll mean for the community in years to come. Because, you know, he was raised here in this community. This was home. He wasn't doing this for some other community that it was just a job. It was much more than that. So, that perspective has really made an impact, you know, for myself, and he's really given a lot to this community. You know, I don't even know what to say about this picture, so we'll just move on. So, you know, I always wondered what color Jim's hair was. Apparently, now we know. And this is Jim. This photo was taken back in 2006, and this is my daughter, actually, on her first Halloween. So, it's, again, it's about perspective, and that's one of the things that I'm personally gonna miss most, is being able to go into Jim's office and sit down and just talk to him. Just, you know, whether it be about work or about life, Jim has great perspective. One of his two sayings that we've talked about many times is one, you know, don't be a victim. You know, there's a lot of victims in this world, and being a victim doesn't accomplish you anything. Whether there's a solution out there, and to go after the solution and to get it done. The other one is, you make your money in the buy, is a saying that he uses a lot. And then really, to me, that's about the opportunities. You know, and this city has a lot of opportunities in front of it. And you get what you make out of those opportunities, and the opportunities are there. Jim couldn't have done it without his family. You know, his family is what raised him, what instilled those morals, those values. It's what he came back home for. It's the only reason he came back to this town. So, to that, I think this community owes him and his family, you know, quite a bit, and his family's been a very strong family here for a long time. And that's the extended family. And to Jim, I'd like to say thank you, and if you want to come up, Jim, I hope you want to say a few words.
Well, I, you can see, it's not hard to be successful when you have somebody like Eric working with you. And the support of the council, it has been a, it's been a real good time. Well, you know. So, I'm sitting in Sacramento, and I'm wondering, it's 100 degrees out. There's people everywhere. I'm driving down the freeway. Cars are going, and I'm nervous because I'm getting older. And I think, I think I need to get out of here. I think I want to go home. I want to be with my folks. I want to be with my brothers and sisters. And I maybe can do something for the community that'll be helpful. I have a lot of knowledge now, a lot of contacts. Maybe I can do something that'll be helpful for my community, because the way I looked at it, I was coming home. And whenever I came home at Christmas, and even when I was in Fort Bragg, I felt like Crescent City was home. And I think when your folks are in an area for a real long time, have an impact in that area, you can feel that impact growing up, and so it really never leaves you. And you have a, you have a passion to do something for your community. I know Eric shares that passion, and that's something that we had together, was we always wanted to do the best thing for this community. And what I received out of all that, we had a lot of great projects, but there's a camaraderie that you get with the team. And we had the engineering part of it, Eric and I and Kevin working together. And then you have the extended team, where you have the whole department, and everybody adds something to the mix. And then you have the city managers having to put up with what you're doing, and the council approving and funding. And if it wasn't for that extended group, we couldn't get any of this done. And I think what I appreciated was the trust that you put in us. And like I said, without that, all these projects Eric's is talking about wouldn't have gotten done. And I am proud of a lot of the things that were accomplished. And I feel like the nine years that we've spent here has been profitable. And I see Ward out in the audience, and I think it isn't just the people that's in the city and involved directly with the city, but it's the whole community that allows for the, all the good work that gets done. And the treatment plant would not have been as successful as it was without Brown and Caldwell's dedication, without Ward and his team's dedication and the whole thing. And I think people feel the passion that you have, and they realize that these are some people that really want to accomplish something for the community. And it's not about them. It's about the community and doing the right thing for them. And so, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank my family for putting up with all the things that go on in these kind of circumstances. And again, just thank everybody for the support that I've had. And I've really enjoyed these nine years. I mean, there's been a few difficult times, but after you've owned a company and been responsible for a couple hundred families, it isn't as, you don't feel distressed if I would have just come in without ever having gone through a lot of different things. So, there is a perspective in it all. And whatever you do, it's worth it. If you can get some things accomplished for the community, that's gonna last. And I feel like we have. And I just, again, I really thank you for the opportunity to have been able to do that and to have worked with these people as long as I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any comments, Catherine?
I feel a little bit emotional, but you will be really missed, Jim. You've been a joy to have as the leadership in our city. All the projects that you've undertaken and what you've dealt with, with some of us on the council. You're just amazing, and we're very fortunate to have you, and thank you to his family, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Jim, in the short time we've worked together, I've learned to appreciate your expertise and your professionalism. I haven't been around to have a lot of comments, so if you could stay another four years, I will have comments at that time, but good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cassidy?
I've had the pleasure of working with Jim, some committees, and then also the bid. The one thing I always remember Jim saying, and I think this is when he was just trying to think, and he always got everything done, but I'd go to him, we'd do something, and he'd look at me and he'd go, "Well, you know, the problem with that is..." Funny, we'd get through and get everything done, and, "Yeah, we're gonna miss you, Jim. Good luck to you."
Thanks. Kelly?
Oh, it wasn't always fun. Feel like we went to hell and back with the wastewater treatment plant. But Jim always had the big picture in mind, and he could always see the big picture when a lot of people couldn't, and that's what I respected most about Jim. There were little things he, you know, would skip over so he could just get things done. And we talked about that many times. I enjoyed Jim more, to me, he was more like a mentor and a friend. And I could go into his office and sit down and shut the door and talk to him anytime. We went on a few drives together to talk about, you know, some of the challenges that the city was having over the past six years. But he's a very special man and very smart. And I appreciate, more than anything, that he always talked about how important family was and how important priorities were. And I can't even imagine us getting as much done over the past six or eight years that the city was able to accomplish without Jim being here with us. I'm just gonna miss your smile more than anything, so I'll be coming over to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. You know, in my years on the council and in Planning Commission, you know, you have to make decisions on different things. And, you know, I'm thinking that I know it, and then I go and talk to Jim, and he has a whole new set of ways that I never saw. I mean, he convinced me that we should take down that landing, because I was against it for a long time. And I finally asked him a question, "You think it'll stand very much longer?" And he said, "No." And I said, "That convinced me." You know, we have to use the expertise of our department heads, because that's why they're there. there. And, um, I've done that several times with Jim. I, I really appreciate the expertise, and he was always right, and, you know, he's an engineer, and that's what he does. And gonna miss you. You're not gonna be far, but we're gonna miss you in the city. And with that, anybody from the public like to come up with a comment? Yes, come on up. Irene?
You know, I can't help but smile.
That's fine. Get the microphone there.
Honestly, you all know best, that you're, I, I respect you like no other in Delmore County. You are the most decent, honorable man that I can come up with, and at times you took attacks from the public that were unnecessary, untrue, and absolute lies at times, because people wanted their agenda. And I, I, it broke my heart, because you are such a decent, great guy. Um, council, you know, when I got on board, we were in, we were in, because I'll say, Jim and Bob and Kelly and Rich, we were in the, um, cultural center with a full house of people, of very unhappy people about what was going on, and, and through the leadership, and I'll also say Ward, too, thank you, because the three of you stepped up sort of as our shields on many occasions and said to the public, "We need to do this." My other comment is, I think you all know I'm sitting on the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, the one that put the ten thousand dollar a day cease and desist order. Now I'm implementing those orders on other cities, not having it all, for a better reason. Staff typically doesn't like city, county engineers, people. The staff at North Coast love Jim Barnes. They all say the nicest things about you, and I say, "Well, then why'd you find him ten thousand dollars a day?" He was so nice. Also, remember, we flew down to, we flew down there, because we were down to four way, treating, right? Connections, four, four connections. And Jim says to me, "Well, we should go down there, we gotta make the pitch to the Water Quality Control Board." At the time, I kinda even didn't even know who they were, puts me on, put me on a plane and took me down to Santa Rosa, and I sat in front of them with Jim. He kind of talked me into it, brought me up. Irene, you gotta do this. You're the council member, and this is what you have to say. And I remember looking at Jim and saying, saying, "Okay, how do I get up there?" And I knew, I didn't want to be down here asking for it, and I knew what kind of power they wielded on Crescent City. And, uh, when there was an opening and the governor was gonna make an appointment, I went to Jim, and I, a lot of those times, Kelly, where you could just walk in anytime on Jim, shut the door, "Jim, Water Quality, you think I can do it?" He not only told me I could do it, he said he'd support me, and Bobby did, too, thank you very much, and now I'm sitting on this regional board, thank you, Jim. But again, I just, when I think of the city, I think of you. I do. I think that you did pull off all those projects. Eric, you got big shoes to fill there. Well, we know you can do it, because you've always been there for all those things, but again, you're just such a pleasure to work with. You're such a decent, honorable, smart guy.
Thank you, Irene. Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Feel free to come on up. Matt?
Well, when Kelly mentioned roasting Jim, my first, my first thought was, "Oh, that would be fun." But, but then it hit me, uh, he's pretty much been roasted at almost every council meeting, so enough is enough, I guess.
Still be fun.
Um, no, I just wanted to, you know, uh, a big thing for me was, was the pool project. I kind of consider that my, one, my legacy to the city, and it, it wouldn't have happened without Jim. He played a huge role in that, and so I just wanted to thank him publicly for everything he did for that pool project and everything else you've done.
Thanks. Bob, did you make a comment?
Well, Jim was great to work with because you always had the sense you were gonna get something done. But, uh, sometimes when I would point out that the path from here to completion was a zigzagging path of stepping stones and, you know, it was gonna take, uh, hitting all those steps in order to get to the end, Jim would say, "No, we're just gonna put on a, we're gonna put on a taller set of boots, and we're just gonna go through the mud." And, and we would go through the mud, and we would get there. And Jim, I'm gonna miss you because of the things that you accomplished for the city, but I'm also gonna miss those billable hours from defending you.
Oh, gee. Spoken like a good attorney, right? Any other comment? Steve, or, uh, Ward, come on up. Ward Stover?
Heard my name mentioned a little bit tonight. There's this urban legend that Jim Barnes handpicked Stover Engineering to do everything in Delmore County. Well, the truth is, Jim Barnes was hired by the city of Crescent City and found out he inherited Stover Engineering. And he wasn't quite sure about me, and he showed up. He, he's been in a position for a lot of years of handpicking who he gets to work with, and, and, uh, one of the biggest projects in Delmore County, he was basically told, "This is who you are working with." He wasn't quite sure, and I remember, uh, one of my first meetings I had with him, we had a conference call, and I met with him in his office, and, and we had to call out, and first words out of Jim's mouth, um, before we entered into the call was, "Ward, if you don't say anything, I'm not paying your bill." So that's how we got started. And, uh, for whatever reason, we must have done something right, because, uh, we've been involved, working with the city and some of Jim's personal projects, and it's been a great relationship for the last nine years. Uh, one of the things that, um, I remember early, early on, too, I was waiting for Irene to mention it, but she didn't, um, there was still a little friction between the city and the county when, uh, Jim came into town, and, uh, there was the infamous, uh, stop signs at the, uh, intersection of, of Pacific, no, Pacific and A.
Oh, that one, yeah.
But the county was all ready to work with the city, and for whatever reason, the city drew a line in the sand, and Jim, Jim showed up, and we sat down one day after he started absorbing what was going on, he says, "Ward, what's the big deal?" And I said, "Well, there isn't a big deal." And, uh, I think in two months, we had the stop sign situation worked out, and Irene on the city side, and Martha Mulcoor on the county side, and it's just, it was all about getting things done, and, and I've learned that from Jim over the years. We've had lots of opportunities to talk about running a private practice. I've gleaned a lot of experience from him, but the, the key one that I really remember and that I use a lot is, uh, early on, it was always about trying to get something accomplished or resolved, and we were trying to get the loan from, from SRF, and we were trying to get, get, uh, some special dispensation from the regional board, and it was always, I'd make a comment to Jim, "Well, let's write a letter." He said, "No, we're not writing a letter. I'm picking you up tomorrow morning, we're gonna go have a meeting with them in Sacramento." Or, "I'm picking you up tomorrow morning, we're gonna have a meeting in, uh, in Santa Rosa." It was all about the face-to-face contact and, and the civility that a lot of us have lost, because, uh, things get lost in the writing. When you sit in front of a person and work something out, it, uh, goes a lot smoother and, and nothing gets lost in the translation. So that's the takeaway I've, I've gotten from you, Jim, and I really appreciate my, my relationship with you over all these years.
Thank you, Ward.
We, we had stop signs put in at Ninth and G quickly because of Jim, and when someone asked if they could see the traffic study, he said, "But you can study it now."
Yeah, that's very true. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all coming. That was really nice of you. We're gonna move on. We have a couple of short other, short other items, uh, we're gonna move on to council items, legislative matters. Is there any, Mr. Palazzo?
Nothing to report.
Okay. City manager's report, there's nothing?
Yeah, we have, uh, just, uh, um, a burn of the El Patio tomorrow night.
Oh, you mean the, um, the one, Esker?
Burl Shop.
Burl Shop.
There you go, that was the last one. The, um, probably five, five to six, five thirty, six o'clock.
Rain or shine? Okay. All right, thank you. Reports, concerns, referrals from the council? Catherine?
Thank you. Uh, my, my big, uh, project or, um, what I did between the last meeting and now is that I attended the joint meeting with the California Coastal Commission, coastal cities and coastal counties in San Francisco this last week, and it also happened to be the fortieth anniversary of the California Coastal Act. So, um, I took copious notes, I haven't typed them all up, but, um, it was, we had, um, a panel of coastal cities members and coastal counties members alongside the coastal commission, which I, apparently they had a meeting like this about two and a half years ago, but not too much had happened since, since that meeting. They didn't make a lot of mo- motion forward, but they had, they covered an enormous amount of issues, primarily on getting the local coastal plans adopted and any amendments. So we, um, we tried to relay our, our concerns and our issues out to the commission in a way that they would maybe want to make some changes, and, uh, we talked about the, um, the business community timelines when we're getting held up on a project, and that, um, the commission, um, I think really took to heart that all of these issues that we laid out for them were pretty much in consensus with every, all the coastal cities and coastal counties, so that they knew that there was a consistent message, and they can't just say that one city's having a problem or, or another county's having an issue. And we also addressed, um, how to work more collaboratively so we can move forward, and one of, the main thing that was taken away from this meeting is that, uh, we're all going to work together to lobby our legislators to, um, get some more funding so that there can be a bigger staff at the coastal commission level, which would help us process our, um, local coastal plans and our amendments. So anyway, um, there, if you were interested, you could watch, um, the entire meeting online. It was about a four and a half hour meeting, and, um, it's on the, um, Coastal Commission's website.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you. I know everyone's in the holiday spirit, and apparently that causes a lot of meetings to be canceled. Uh, so, uh, I, I didn't, I attended a lot of meetings over the last, uh, couple of weeks, but I did go to the fire department, uh, monthly meeting, and I know there, there were a couple others there, and it's always impressive to see that group of volunteer firefighters. Um, I don't know if I mentioned this to, to the chief earlier, but when we were in San Diego at that conference, I was talking with some people about safety and about, about firefighting, and they were most impressed that we had an all-volunteer fire department. They just don't know of any other cities like that, so, again, I, I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gastineau?
I've been pretty busy, you know, new and all, so I have to get around, but, uh, see, I was there also at the, uh, Firefighters Hall. Great dinner, thanks, chief. I still gotta get the donuts over to the guys, though, and then the last department I have to take care of. Uh, there's also the downtown Crescent City Business Improvement District meeting, um, went to the, uh, CR Coral Community Concert, which was awesome, very, very holiday. Um, let's see, Chamber Mixer, Catherine Taylor's, uh, then we, uh, at the RHS, we visited Eureka High and Access Humboldt, which, uh, definitely is to further develop our, our access channel here in Delmore County and also help with youth media, and that was a really good trip. I attended Top Blue Marine Grand Opening with a lot of other council members here, and then, uh, me and, uh, Mayor Nia and, and Mr. Palazzo were at the SBDC Social Media Flight Graduation for Local Business Owners and Entrepreneurs, which is very encouraging to see that. And then, uh, this last Friday, I attended my first Visitors Bureau Board meeting, where we discussed a lot about marketing, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
Well, I'm glad to see that the, uh, chief is following in my footsteps of, uh, anytime there's a new council member, they have to bring food to your meeting, so if there's anybody else that wants to take advantage of Councilman Gastineau, you just let him know to bring food to the first meeting, and he's very good at following through. Um, a lot of my, uh, meetings have been canceled as well due to the holidays, so I've attended, uh, all the Chamber Mixers at Catherine Taylor's and El Valley Casino, and, um, just wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, um, hope everybody has a safe holiday, and just remember that if you are able, I know that RHS's, uh, Operation Santa is still, uh, I see, still see a lot of the little mittens around town, um, so if you can buy a gift for a child, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I, too, uh, there were a lot of meetings canceled, but a couple of them that I went to was the Airport Authority Meeting, and that's coming, coming right along, and you might have read in the paper that they want to exchange some land in Pacific Shores for where the, uh, runway extension is gonna go, so they're working on that. The, um, the Small Business Development Center graduation, where there's eight people that graduated that are starting their own businesses, whether they're online or, uh, otherwise, and there'll still be some good ones. One's coming is a barbecue place, and it's not a, it's not a building, he's gonna be, um, he'll go to events, and that's gonna come to the farmer's market when they open again, uh, next spring, and there's, there's others. And the Chamber Mixers, one of the ones that we were really, uh, Councilmember Gastineau and I attended, uh, was the grand opening of Top Blue Marine. Actually, it's Front Street Seafood Market is their other name, so we now have a fresh seafood market in town on Front Street, and they have many varieties of fish, seafood, and, uh, it's nice to see that. It's nice to see a new business opening in our town, and, so that was, that was a, um, that was nice to go to that. And, um, I'd like to, to wish, on behalf of the council, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Our next meeting is going to be on January seventh at six o'clock here in the chambers, and everyone have a pleasant evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
Happy holidays.